All right. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our third virtual planning board meeting for the Village of East Hampton. Today is Thursday, July 9th, and it's 11 o'clock. The first order of business is the minutes from our last meeting on June 11th that you all, that has been previously distributed. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at them, review them? And does anybody have any changes or corrections that we'd like to, we'd like to talk about?
Looks good to me. I make a motion, we accept them.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Excellent. Minutes have been approved. Thank you. I'm going to skip down on our agenda to the adjournments. We have a letter submitted from Ackerman, Pacman, Brown, and Goldstein LLP. Again, respectfully requesting an adjournment of today's scheduled July 9th planning board meeting for 218 and 226 Firda Lane, which I think we shall grant. If there are no objections, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you. Okay, moving along, lot line modifications. 39 and 43 Georgia Road. I will ask Mr. Tarbit to recuse himself for this. Okay, so we took a look at this at our last meeting. And I will ask Billy if he's had time to take a look at this and if he's had any comments for us to think about or discuss.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. So I prepared a report for the planning board, was submitted on June 24. And I essentially provided a summary of the proposed project. The existing improvements, the existing site conditions are all identified there. You've probably all know the property. It's an old historic home. There, the one lot is unusually shaped. It is improved with a two-story residence. It has a carriage house with a garage and an apartment above, a swimming pool and a poolhouse. And the second lot, subject to the lot line modification, is currently vacant. Both lots, both properties are undergoing a landscaping restoration at this moment. There are no real environmental conditions to speak of, of any importance. The properties are generally flat. They're in flood zone X. And aside from some very large mature trees, there are, like I said, there are no any, no significant environmental conditions to be concerned about. So the applicant is proposing to adjust the boundaries of the two lots. They're doing it in a fashion that does not change the lot area of either property. They're, they're both non-conforming in terms of lot area. And the result is two lots that keep the same degree of non-conformity for both lots. It, it appears to me that variances would be required for the project because they are reducing the lot width with the arrangement of the parcels. They are reducing the lot width on one lot to be less than what the minimum required width would be. And in, in general, to me, it, it's an unconventional lot. The, the improved property is rather unusual right now. But I think the lot line modification, although there are some benefits in that it makes the house conforming and it gives them room to construct accessory improvements on the improved lot. It, it creates, you know, somewhat even further unusual layout. And, you know, it's just going to be something the board is going to have to look at and decide if it's better than what exists. You do have the authority to ask for revised plans. Perhaps, you know, the applicant can come up with an alternative that hasn't been considered here that might provide for more rectangularly shaped parcels that don't have so many unusual angles to them. Or the board might be satisfied with this current plan. It's, it's, that's really for your decision. But I, I do think it would be important to look at other alternatives just to see if it's a viable, they're viable options. And I do have a recommendation in terms of the map, the mapping. It's kind of difficult to determine what exists and what's proposed. So my report has some recommendations that I'm going to be making for all lot line modifications now, that the maps be done in a certain style to make it easier for the board to understand what exists and what's proposed. I'm not going to go over what those are. They're in my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is it proposed that they, the current owners sell the vacant lot? Is that what is?
I don't know. I don't think there's any, I mean, they're not, they didn't disclose what they're doing with it. I don't think, my understanding is that there's no plan for it to be sold separately. It actually looks like they're being used in conjunction with one another. They're being landscaped. To me, it looks as though they're going to be used as sort of a compound.
I mean, why do they want two lots, I guess?
Well, they're, they are two lots. It's already two lots. They're just adjusting the boundary. It looks to me like they're adjusting the boundary, one to make the house conforming and also to make room, to create room on the improved lot to construct new accessory improvements. That, to me, that's what, the applicant's on the phone, so maybe they can describe it in greater detail.
That'd be helpful.
Can I just, can I clarify one thing? I think, Billy, you had said that their both lots are non-conforming, only one of.
Sorry, who's talking now? Who's talking now?
Oh, sorry, it's Madeline Van John.
Okay.
Representing the applicant. I just wanted to clarify that only one of the lots is non-conforming and will stay non-conforming. The other one is conforming. And to address the other question, there is, there is no immediate plans to, to sell the lot. They intend to keep the lot.
Can I?
Would they, would they be considering just dropping the, you know, combining the two lots?
Um, I mean, we're exploring a couple of different options, but I wouldn't, that's not something we would consider right now. They do have two buildable lots and there is value in that. So that's not something they'd be considering right at this moment.
I want to thank you, Billy. I think that your, your comments are very helpful. I, I agree. That, the one lot is, is very unusual. And I, I would like to know if there's a possibility that we could see other options. But also, at our last meeting, I addressed the fact that in the environmental assessment form, the representative for the applicant typed in onto the form on questions 1, 5, and 11, their interest potentially putting in a separate cut. And so I, I commented about that last month. And I think there was going to be some follow-up by the applicant's representative to discuss that further with us.
Yeah, we were waiting to receive Billy's full report to see all of his the map changes that he asked for. We can take a look at that, but it's not so much that we would be creating a new curb cut. It's just that the lots both have enough frontage as per Village Code to have their own curb cut. That's why it was written that way on the EAF. It's not that we were intending to create extra curb cuts that aren't permitted.
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying. But since in addition to the standard form, you took it upon yourselves to literally type in with an asterisk on questions 1, 5, and 11, the fact that you feel there is sufficient frontage to add a separate driveway. And my comment was that just, I think, as we're looking at the comprehensive plan, moving forward in planning for our community, we're trying to limit curb cuts. So that was my comment last time. And I, I, it's still on my mind.
I agree with you.
Look at it.
Okay. I agree with you, O'Brien. We're trying to keep those curb cuts to a minimum. I thought we talked the last six or eight months about this. So I'm agreeing with you, O'Brien, about the curb cut.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree as well. And I think it would be a good idea for the applicant to maybe see if there is any way they can make this one L-shaped lot a little more regular. I know it's going to be kind of difficult looking at the map. Also, it might be a good idea just to take a look at the building potential or the proposed building envelopes for this L-shaped lot, just so we can, the board can get an idea of where structures can be placed in relation to the lot lines. And then potentially a proposed single curb cut for both lots. That might be a good idea for us to just have a look at.
Yeah, the, um, the building envelopes are, that was one of the things Billy requested. So we will, we will be submitting that.
Okay, great.
I think they should sit down with Billy and come up with an idea straightening that. Like you said before, there's no idea and with a single curb cut. That's the way I'm looking at this. So it's a lot cleaner looking on a set of plans and stuff like that.
Right, right.
I agree.
Seth, did you have any?
Thank you, Billy, if you would be willing to do that.
Yeah, sure. If the applicant wants to, I'm happy to sit down with them and talk about it.
Do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. All right, so I guess we will wait until we get a new revised plan and Billy has a chance to meet with the applicant and see what they can come up with.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Tarbit, you can come back. All right. All right, next up, we have 36 and 39 Middle Lane. Another lot line modification. I think we've all seen, I hope you've all seen Billy's memo regarding the change in lot lines for these two properties. Billy, if you'd just like to walk us through your memo.
If I could interject, Shelley Slade, it's actually 35 and 39 Middle Lane, 36?
Oh, 35, I'm sorry.
Billy, you're on mute.
Thank you. Thanks, O'Brien. Sorry about that. So this is very similar to the last request. It's two existing parcels. Both lots, in this case, are improved with single-family residences. And the applicant is looking to adjust the boundary, one of the common boundaries between the two lots. In, in this case, the existing layout is, is fairly unusual. Sort of like a sawtooth at the rear of the one lot. And the result would be sort of regularizing, if that's a correct term, the rear lot line. And I think, in my opinion, it makes for two more regularly, you know, shaped lots, things that we would be looking for. I don't offer any real objection to the proposed layout. I think it's, it's pretty good. In terms of just housekeeping matters, I, I did request the map be revised to show, to be consistent, to show the existing and after conditions so that the board, it's, it's very easy for the board to digest and, and understand what's happening. The request was submitted on three different surveys. It's a little hard to kind of follow exactly what's happening. But I think that map will yield a result that is very clear for the board to understand. And I think it'll be self-evident that it's a, it's a pretty good result in terms of lot line modifications. I do have a correction for the memo. We discussed it with the applicant's attorney and with Beth. They do not need to submit the EAF Part 1. This is a type, type 2 action, classified as a type 2 action. In terms of environmental conditions, the lots are generally flat. There are no significant environmental conditions to be concerned about. And this property was subject to a prior subdivision approval and then a subsequent modification of that subdivision. And the critical point of that subdivision was the creation of a shared common driveway or shared access point onto Middle Lane. And I would just reinforce that the single common access point should be maintained. And the applicant's attorney did provide a copy of that easement. And it seems as though it's, it's written into the deed, but I don't know if there's a specific location for the driveway. It just basically means that they were to cover the existing driveway with an easement. In current, in more modern times, we like to see the meets and bounds of those easements and have the easement actually depicted on the map. And finally, because the, the bigger elephant in the room might be the requirement to make this far road compliant. And I, I think the, the map should be referred to the fire marshal to determine if any improvements are going to be required to the common driveway as a result of a lot line modification. That might be the only big ticket item to deal with here. Other than that, I'm happy to answer questions if the board has any.
Okay, so I think we can send it on to the Village Fire Marshal. Also, there is a couple of things that I noticed on, on the three surveys. The back lots, most of the utilities are not within that common driveway. So I think we may need to, that may need to be addressed, maybe a little formally at some point. Maybe that's, that's part of the more formal meet and bounds description of the, the easement going back. I think the electric service servicing the back house is also on the front property. I don't know if that might be an issue. That's just a couple of things that I saw reviewing the surveys. So I'm not sure how we, how we deal with that formally moving forward. But it's just something I, I think to think of.
I have a question, two questions.
Okay.
If, if, if the planning board in 1985 required that the lots share a common driveway and then in, in 1992, if the prior requirement was continued, is it necessary when a lot line modification is considered for any reason after, after such a condition has been established, that such conditions are reasserted as continuing in place? Or is it just, you know, is, is it assumed that if such decision is made, then it moves forward in perpetuity unless a decision overrules that? Did I make sense with what I just said? Did anybody understand what I just said?
I, I think it would, it continues. However, I think it's always helpful to continue it along the way, just so it's clear. You know, when going, it doesn't look like it got dropped for some reason without an explanation. It's always clear. So I think it would continue, but I think it's always clear to maintain that in your newer determination.
To state it as they did in 92.
More information is always better.
Yeah, it, because in case new people are involved with the property that they have in front, that they may not have been aware of what happened in the past. Okay. And my next question is just really a little bit. Could somebody just explain to me, and the environmental condition? It says the properties contain Bridgehampton silt loam and are considered prime agricultural soils. I never heard that phrase before. I, I did look it up, but I'm really not clear on what it is or why it's noted. Could somebody explain that to me?
I noted it because it's one of the environmental conditions of the property. Bridgehampton silt loam is considered a prime agricultural. So when Suffolk County Cornell Cooperative or Cornell University created a soil survey for all of Long Island, they did it in the 70s, and they classified all the soils. And when they did that, they ranked the soils in terms of their, the soil's farmability, their drainage capabilities. So, you know, they noted dune areas or sandy soils or loamy soils. So each, each, each classification is representative of conditions that you might find on the property. And here I just was adding the note that they are Bridgehampton silt loams and they are prim soils. So that's, it would be, it, it probably was farmland at one point and it, it's very good tillable land.
So Bridgehampton silt loam is just the name of a type of soil?
That's correct.
Is that right? And is, is there any condition that says in, in, in light of having been recognized as such that they can't put chemicals on it?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Without asking too much?
It would be more if, if this were a subdivision where they were creating new, you know, new lots. The, the board would have the ability. The idea, the fact that there's Bridgehampton loams or primax soils might be reason to request an agricultural easement or an agricultural reserve area, something like that. But in terms of, but for a lot line modification, it, it's not, that doesn't come up as a, as an issue.
Yeah, and as one of the owners, I can tell you, I don't like chemicals and I don't plan to use them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Whoever just said that.
Shelley Slade. I, I believe my sister feels similarly. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Shelley.
Beth, did you have any comments?
No, I think Billy just covered it before that the lot line modifications are actually type 2 pursuant to SEACRA. They, the DEC submitted an updated handbook that clarified that it's meant that lot line modifications, they call them adjustments, are actually type 2, just so the board is aware of that moving forward.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, if I may. My name is John Huber. I'm an attorney with Dayton, Voorhees, and Balsam in East Hampton. Good morning, everyone. I'm the attorney for the applicants. Thank you all for your time today. Thank you for Billy and Beth and Pam for the support you've given to the application. I guess what I'll do is just move quickly through Billy's memo. And, and I would like to confirm Shelley raised the issue. She clarified it's 35 and 36.
Middle Lane.
This is indeed a type 2 action pursuant to SEACRA 617.5, subpart C16. I wanted to quickly address, Billy didn't mention it. And I, I just wanted to discuss the area variance that he mentioned. It might, you know, he, he, he did raise the issue. If I may, I would like to submit to the board, I don't believe that an area variance under these circumstances is required. The proposed modification is not altering the existing lot areas. Each lot will remain precisely the same size. The, we're not increasing the degree of non-conformity. Insofar as the proposed lot lines to be modified are interior, we're not altering the lot width or any other operative dimension of the properties that would require an area variance. Also, I took a look at the Village Code, and I believe that there's a provision in there that touches on the subject. It's, it's Village Code Section 278-1, paragraph B3A. Talks about non-conforming lots. And it states that a non-conforming lot may be used and a building or structure may be erected thereon for use in accordance with all other applicable provisions of the chapter, which is Chapter 278 zoning, provided that the properties have been held in a single and separate ownership prior to the date that they became non-conforming. So we obtained, or the, the owners obtained the original subdivision. I believe it was in 1985. And then subsequent to that, the property was upzoned to the R160. So we, I, I believe we fall within the framework of that code section. Additionally, we're not creating new lots as contemplated by Code Section 278-3, paragraph A1, which sets forth the area requirement for lots in the R160 zone. We are merely seeking to adjust and normalize the existing lot and its interior. So we're not altering the street frontage or anything like that. The other thing that I wanted to mention to the board that might not be obvious is just recently, we demolished the swimming pool that had been existing on Lot 35 in order to avoid the need for an area variance. Because the new lot lines, with the pool there, it would not have been in conformity. So we eliminated the swimming pool to eliminate the need for the area variance. And I had met with Billy back in December to discuss this. And we did cover that issue. And my understanding was that so long as we don't reduce the size of either lot, we probably could maintain the status quo in terms of the non-conformity. We also satisfy the design criteria set forth in the Village's code. In particular, the, they bear a reasonable, the proposal outlines bear a reasonable relationship to the features and conditions on the properties. And this will render the lots rectangular in shape, which is, is desirable. Over, Billy referred to it as sawtooth, and I agree with that. Certainly, I defer to Village Attorney Baldwin to consider the points I raised about the area variance. And I would also like to confirm for you, I've, I've discussed with the applicants and they're willing to continue abiding by the single curb cut, which was the condition from the 85 subdivision forward. And so we can continue with that. I guess my final comment was, and certainly we respect Fire Marshal Column's analysis, but based on our assessment of the New York State Fire Code, at this point, I think that we probably do not trigger the need for a fire apparatus access road. We're certainly willing to explore that further with Fire Marshal Column. And Mr. Schwagel, I believe, is on the line. He is working with the owners of 39 Middle Lane. And I believe that Fire Marshal Column would be best if he conferred directly with Mr. Schwagel about those considerations. Are there any other questions that I can answer for anyone or address any other issues?
John, would you mind just sending me what you talked about with regard to the area variance? Just so I can take a look at it.
Of course, I'll summarize it and email it over as soon as we conclude the meeting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Oh, Matt, one final comment. The, thank you, Chairman, for your observations about the utility lines. The, so there's a deeded easement favoring 39 Middle Lane onto 35 Middle Lane. And basically, just reading from those legal descriptions, it states as follows, "Together with a right-of-way easement for all driveway purposes, including installation and maintenance of utilities to and over the existing driveway on other premises now or formerly of Jarvis J. Slade, formerly the owner of 35 Middle Lane, Shelley's dad, father of both of the applicants." So according to the David Saskis survey, and Billy's correct, there is not a meets and bounds description for where the driveway or the utilities are located. I believe that was by design, which would afford them the opportunity to relocate that is necessary without violating the meets and bounds. without violating the meets and bounds description. But I'd be happy if the village decides that you'd like to see some more formalized language about, and, and if I may, the, the, um, the wa- the, the water line and the electric line servicing 39 Middle Lane do run along the driveway that is on 35 Middle Lane. So I believe the easement, the deed of easement language addresses it. And the surveys also show that it is on the stone driveway on 35 Middle Lane. That said, we're certainly willing to discuss, uh, formalizing or altering that language slightly if the board feels that that would behoove the effort.
Okay. John, I think you also have a gas line there as well, just so you, you're aware of that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's on the survey. So the gas line shows up in yellow.
Yes, correct.
Water and gas. That's correct.
Correct. Okay. I, I think we probably want something formalized for that, just, um, moving along.
Sure. I, I imagine.
Looking forward.
Of course. Yeah. I imagine the vehicle for that would be some kind of a correction deed or a revised deed, uh, delineating more specifically.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
Um, we have a caller on the line.
Okay. Caller, hello?
Never mind. They just signed off.
Okay. All right. So we will wait on the additional information for this. Also, um, a memo from our Fire Marshal. And, uh, we'll review that when that information comes back. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is 44 Hunting Lane LLC. This is a driveway revision. You all should have received, uh, both a letter and an updated map showing.
Also an easement.
Sorry?
Um, in addition to the driveway, there's a, a walking.
There, there is a walking easement. So this is showing, um, a revision for a turnaround going from, originally from lot one and now being shown on, uh, lot three. Billy, do you have any comments on this?
Sure. Uh, good morning. Um, Billy Hayjack again. So the applicant submitted a request to, as you indicated, shift the emergency turnaround portion of the common driveway onto lot three. The map shows a 10-foot wide easement along the, I guess, the westerly boundary of lot two. Um, I don't know, it, it doesn't really say what the easement is, but I'm, I, I, it was described to me by the applicant, or the applicant's representative, as a pedestrian easement for lot one over lot two, I guess, to access the circle. In my, in my view, I mean, and Beth can weigh in on this, but that's a, that's a private easement between two, two neighbors. I don't necessarily believe that that's something that belongs on a subdivision map. Because it's not an easement that's being requested or required by the planning board. So I, I don't necessarily think that that should be put on a filed subdivision map. Uh, but, uh, the, the primary objective, I think, is the relocation of the emergency turnaround. And I would just point out to the board that lot three is probably the most constrained parcel in, in the subdivision. And, uh, it's going to become more constrained because that emergency turnaround must remain open and unobstructed, um, for use. So i- in addition to that emergency turnaround, lot three is also going to have to have its own parking and driving area, you know, driving driveway and parking area. So, um, I just point that out to the board for your information.
I thought we.
If you have any questions, I'll, I'll answer them.
I thought we had that all figured out a few months ago with the, with the turnaround for the emergency service and stuff like that, didn't we?
It was, uh, well, when, yes, when it was, when the map was approved, uh, originally approved, the emergency turnaround was to the, slightly to the south, um, located, located on lot one.
Correct. That's what I remember. Now why they want to move it?
Uh, the applicant should explain that. Yeah. Okay.
Hi, this is John Keen, Keen Development. It's, uh, on the applicant. The, um, correct, we had it on lot one originally. Then we have sold lots two and three to one family. And, um, part of the, of the negotiation was that that turnaround would be on their two lots, not on lot number one. And it's all we've done is shifted over the property. Part of it is because if you have, if you had the lot number one and then another driveway on lot number two, they're going to be basically side by side, making a very wide pavement area. So because it's going to be owned by one family, it's basically going to become their driveway and they will have a turnoff to the house from there. The other part of this is that there's a possibility they're only going to do one house. And in the event they only do one house and it's within 300 and 300 or 350 feet from the road, they can eliminate this turnaround. I've reviewed this with Ken Cullen and he was okay with the change of where we now have the, the fire exit, the new location, and also concurred that if we do have a, uh, front door within a certain distance of the road, this will become a moot point.
Okay.
But we don't have anything from Ken Cullen. Yes or no? Billy?
No. I, I haven't, I haven't received anything from Kenny on it. No.
Okay.
Um, and that's predicated, this is all predicated on the, on the buyer of lots two and three merging it together. I mean, the way it's going to be approved, it's approved as two lots. I mean, he could change his mind and decide to build two houses. So, um.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
He, he is, however, very much aware of this change. It's part of the contract. As a matter of fact, we not only have it as part of the contract, there's a stipulation in the contract that if this board chooses not to approve this, then we are going to walk away from that sale with the gentleman who wants the one house on the two lots.
I'm sorry. Could you clarify what you just said? I, I, I heard it, but I, it didn't connect.
Yes.
Say that again, please?
Yes. The, the, the buyer of lots two and three is aware of this change and accepted this change. His intention is to don't build one house on the two lots. As, as Billy Hayjack said, the map is going to be filed as it is, which means technically he could build two houses, but he would have the turn, that, that fire thing on his lots. So he understands exactly what it is he's buying. Uh, we have a stipulation in our contract that if the board chooses not to allow us to do this, then we can walk away from that sale because we do not want it on lot one. We want it on, on those two lots. And we negotiated the price according to the fact that it was going to be moved to that two lots.
You know, my, my point is, you know, you're negotiating, the, the applicant's negotiations about the sale aside, my, my main object, my main point is that lot three is a small, is the smallest lot. And if you have the turnaround located entirely on it and then they have to put their driveway on it, I just don't want the planning board to be in a situation where you end up creating a lot that, you know, is so constrained that at some point somebody's going to have to request variances because, you know, a quarter of their lot is emergency turnaround and parking areas. That's, that's my own, you know, hesitation, um, on this. And that's why I'm, it's the only reason I'm pointing it out to the board. That's all.
Billy, the driveway would have to be, where that turnaround is, where that fire road is, would be a driveway regardless.
Yeah, but it can't stay obstructed. It, as an emergency turnaround, it has to remain unobstructed.
You would still have an entranceway. All of our plans had an entranceway on the exact same spot that the turnaround is, going to a courtyard in front of the house. So my point is that the driveway will be there either way, whether it's a fire exit, fire road or a driveway. So it's, yeah.
Correct. So I guess, I guess, Billy, I, I'm sort of in favor of what you're talking about. I mean, lot three is pretty constrained right now. You have access going a lot two across their front yard. Um, you have this fire access that needs to remain open and not used as parking. You know, there also needs to be some kind of parking on this lot somewhere. I'm just a little concerned that their whole front yard potentially be, could become, you know, driveway turnaround and parking, you know, further restraining, um, how that lot can be developed.
Oh, it will be. It, it, but, and that's, you know, that, and that's fine if the buyer is aware of that. I'm just concerned that that's going to get used as a, as a, as a tool to request relief because a third of their lot is got to be paved.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's, that was something.
The landscaping trucks are there and the trash collecting trucks are there. The whole point is mute.
And that was, you know, that was analyzed during the, the subdivision, you know, why, by locating it on lot one.
Right, right.
Well.
Okay. I mean, the board, list, the board can get formal feedback from Kenny Cullen too. And, and see what Kenny, you know, Kenny has an issue with its location. You know, you, you're free to do that. So.
I would like to hear from Kenny Cullen because I, we, we approved this, uh, I mean, months ago now. We're back at, uh, doing this road again. So I think I want to hear from Kenny Cullen and what his ideas about this.
Yeah, I think I would agree. Um, Beth, would this, would this trigger, um, a public hearing to make this change?
Um, I would have to look and see if it could, it's a modification of the board's prior approval. I would have to say.
Okay.
Did you have a public hearing for the original?
Yes. No, I wasn't.
Yeah, there was. There was a public hearing for the subdivision. And in the past, the board has basically, you know, decided for modifications to a map, uh, whether or not they needed to hold a public hearing based on the magnitude of the change. It's really up to the board to decide.
Okay. I think we should wait until we.
I have two questions.
Okay, go ahead, Oberon.
Could, could you just clarify for me the, the whole issue of this pedestrian easement, which, um, seemed pretty strange to me? Uh, purpose being that the people on lot one could get into the village without walking to Main Street, uh, around the corner and instead, um, passing over that property in the back. I mean, I'm familiar with it. Plus I went and looked at it again. And, um, I was just wondering why we even were looking at that. It seems like such a potentially problematic matter. And then I was thinking, well, how many feet are involved in a pedestrian easement? You know what I'm saying? How, what is the width of such a thing? So, um, I just was wondering why it, it was, uh, what our consideration of that would be. I'm not clear on that.
I, I can explain what it is. It's a, it's a path for the, for lot one to be able to access the circle. So if you've got young children, if you've got young children, it's much safer to access onto the circle, which as you might know, is much closer to town than walking all the way down Hunting Lane.
Well, I do know that, but, 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 so the owners on, of lot two and three are going to have screaming children, you know, running around back and forth on their bicycles or what? I mean, it just seems like such a strange thing to even consider. It's not the place of the planning board? Is that what the, is that what the conclusion was early on when we first brought this forward?
Yeah, Oberon, I don't think it's a, that really shouldn't be shown on the map. That's really, if they, if they decide to grant an easement to one another, that's really between the two neighbors. It's not a planning board matter.
So it wouldn't be a permanent circumstance anyway? The people on lots two and three could sell their house in five years and that easement that they may agree to with their neighbors on lot number one would disappear. It has nothing to do with us on a map?
Right. It's between the neighbors, not something that the, it's not a condition of any approval or anything like that.
Okay. And I have, uh, one, one last clarification, if you could please inform me. Um, I remember, well, it was a long time ago, but there was a, a consideration of, um, of the timing, and I could be wrong on this because it was so while ago. But was there a timeline with regard to the restoration of the historic house on lot number one prior to work beginning on lots number two and three? Was that, is that my imagination or is there some clarification in that regard?
That, not with the subdivision. No, there was no, there, there's no connection of development for redevelopment of lot one as part of the subdivision. But I, the applicant did just obtain, uh, design review board approval for the restoration and enlargement of that whole lot, lot one. It looks like they are working towards doing that. It's, it looks like a very nice design. Yeah.
Great.
And we, we plan on going forward with that immediately. And obviously if the board chooses not to go forward with this, then we're just going to cancel the contract and go forward with two more houses in the back instead of just the one.
But my, my question was about the lot number one house, uh, the, uh, having to meet specifications for historic guidelines. But, but Billy just informed me about that plan. So good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on, uh, on this? I think what we'll do is we'll wait for, um, Kelly, Kenny Cullen's response. And we can move forward with that as well.
I don't think we're going to, we don't want to put you through that. I, I think we're going to just keep what we've got, cancel our contract and we'll build the two houses in the back. But thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay. Um, does anybody have anything else to bring before us before we adjourn?
I have nothing. I make a motion we adjourn?
Okay. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Thank you all and have a great day and a great weekend.